We are now recording.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to a special edition. This is our first of two public hearings on procedures for discipline, attorney competency and admissions. And this is pursuant to California Business and Professions Code six zero nine five. And it's our pleasure to hear from members of the public on ways to ways to improve either one of those three areas. So to start things off, I don't think we need to take role, but I see we have a couple of trustees in attendance. So thank you for making yourselves available the day after a long Thanksgiving weekend. Hopefully, everybody had a great, great holiday with their, their family and loved ones. So Louisa, could we just take role real quick?
Sure. Buenaventura?
Present.
Chen, not present. Cisneros?
Here.
Good, not present. User? Not present. Shelby? Not present. So well, not present. Stallings?
Here.
Tony?
Present.
Trejo?
Here.
All right. Thank you, guys, for being here. What I wanted to do is have our trustees introduce themselves. Just give a little information about your background and whatever else you feel led to share about today's hearing. So I'm just going to start at the top of who I see trustee Buenaventura, would you mind going first?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Chair. So my name is Ray Buenaventura. I've been an attorney for about thirty years. I'm the chief public defender of Lake County. And I'm also the mayor of Daly City, and I'm a certified criminal law specialist. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Buenaventura. Trustee Trejo.
Hi, I'm Gennaro Trejo, and I manage Pacific Well, which is a private equity and deal sourcing company. I also am very active in the nonprofit space and sit on several boards throughout the city of LA.
All right, trustee Tony.
My name is Mark Tony. And I am a gubernatorial appointee to the state bar. I've served for about three and a half years, about three years. And in my day job, I serve as executive director of TURN, the Utility Reform Network. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Cisneros.
Good morning. Hello, everyone. Jose Cisneros. I am the elected treasurer of San Francisco, a governor appointee, and have been on also for over three years.
Excellent. And then I see we're joined by our esteemed staff. We have Leah Wilson, our executive director, Aline Dufian, our general counsel, Louisa Arpetian, our board secretary, and then Alfredo Hernandez, assistant to the board secretary, so, or assistant board secretary. Any comments from staff on the outset?
No, just look forward to hearing what folks have to share with us.
Absolutely. Just by way of background introduction, my name is Brandon Stallings. I'm the Supreme Court Appointed to the Board of Trustees. And my day job, I am a deputy district attorney in Kern County. So I've had the pleasure of chairing the Regulation and Discipline Committee prior to it becoming a committee of the board of the whole and have been involved with a lot of the important reforms and work that the state bar has undertaken. I know Mr. Tony, Vice Chair Cisneros, have also been integrally involved in a lot of those reforms, but we want to hear from the public on their ideas on ways that we can get better and are striving towards organizational excellency and having that trajectory of organizational excellence. As an incumbent that we receive public comment and then take that public comment to heart. And I know from myself and definitely I think I can speak for the rest of the trustees and staff here that we do take these, these comments to heart. So with that, I will make a call for a public comment. State bar staff will attempt to call members of the public in the order in which they appear on the attendee pool. Believe that we have several that have signed up ahead of time, so preference will be given to those who signed up. Thank you for doing that. For those of you participating via Zoom, you should have a function for virtually raising your hand. And if you wish to address the committee, please click on that hand icon now. And state bar staff will call on you in the order that hands are raised. For those of you who are participating by phone, you may virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine. That is the star key, the number nine. Again, doing so will alert staff that you would like to make a comment and state bar staff will call on you and open your microphone so that you can address the committee. Due to time restrictions, we can allow, we cannot allow more than five. That's five minutes for each speaker. So please note that staff will have an on-screen countdown timer visible to all attendees during the duration of your public comment. So the timer's five-minute countdown will begin as soon as you start your comment. The on-screen timer will flash through the final ten seconds. So I'm going to hand this portion now over to Ms. Arpetian. And I believe that our first speaker is Mr. Michael Sternberg.
Yes, I do not see Michael Sternberg in attendance at the moment. If you'd like, we can move on to the next speaker, Chair Stallings.
Yes, we'll check back after we've received public comment to see if Mr. Sternberg's available.
Next, we have Jody Sussman, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Hello, this is Jody Sussman. I want to speak to the fact that there is little to no accountability for corrupt attorneys in Southern California. They basically rule the probate court. They fraudulently put my mother into a conservatorship in 2019. She has since passed a year and a half ago, and we are still dealing with these corrupt attorneys. They lied about my mom's physical health, mental health, financial stability. They said that she had one point three million dollars worth of loans that were overdue and the biggest one overdue since 2017. We had a hearing about their fees. The second, the first hearing, they stipulated that everything would be put under submission for the judge to rule on their fees. The judge reduced their collective fees by $250,000. They tried to charge my mom $750,000 for twenty months of their services to so-called protect her. When the judge reduced their fees, they filed an appeal against the stipulation that they signed. Our latest fee hearing was on May 25th or concluded May 25th. They again have filed an appeal against what they said they would do because the judge reduced their fees this time by a hundred thousand and guardian ad litem's from forty-four thousand down to, I think, eight thousand. There is, this group lies and commits fraud and perjury in the Southern California courts to destroy lives and take over people with wealth. They cost my mom in less than five years, close to five million dollars. They tried to remove her from her home claiming she needed 24/7 care and her house needed repair. That was a blatant lie. My mom was a general contractor and her house was still under construction. She was remodeling the kitchen and a back room that wasn't even used. My whole point is that there is no accountability. There, nothing happens to these inscrupulous attorneys that blatantly lie with no documentation of anything to our courts. And the judge believes everything that comes out of their mouth. We've been called everything from greedy heirs to addicts and all kinds of things just to silence us. To discredit myself being improper, the Law Office of Eric Becker said that they have already initiated slander suit against me to discredit my comments to the judge. That was another blatant lie. That was over two years ago. There needs to be some sort of accountability for profit. They are ruining our families. They're overtaking pre-existing trusts. They're rewriting wills. If there's nothing happens to them, we have to spend our own money to defend our family, which is ridiculous because they're using my mother's estate against my mom and, and us children. And not that we're children, but we are adults fighting for our mother's rights. This, what they did to my mother devastated her so much, and they are claiming that, oh, she lived in the lap of luxury. They destroyed our family legacy for their own profit. My parents built the American Way Cultural Center in the city of Orange as our family legacy and to honor God. But they had to not just sell her property under value, but have it completely demolished. They came after her just for the value of her property. They claimed it was worth $3 million to initiate this. It sold at auction for 16.7. It was worth over 20 million. Please do something, I beg of you. Please hold these people accountable with jail time and restitution to their victims. I thank you for your time. God bless you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sussman, and sorry to hear about the struggles that you and your mother are going through. We'll definitely, we have staff taking notes on these issues and will, you know, reach out to the appropriate parties here. All right. Next up, Louisa.
Next, we have Faraz Rahimi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, my name is Faraz Rahimi. Luckily, I was the one after Ms. Jody Sussman. My comment is following seconding on what Ms. Jody Sussman, your first speaker, I mean, public commenter, said, I fell in the same disastrous, horrific, brutal, unfair to the probate system with the same people. If the board, if all the complaint of Ms. Jody Sussman for years to the fiduciary bureau and to the bar association would acted, I would not be in this position. After four years that, you know, fighting with the bad brother trustee, we removed him and a million dollar attorney fee. And then we were just somehow forced to, I mean, to came with the same company that they were conservative ship for Ms. Jody Sussman. And it, you know, it was a private professional fiduciary for us. Richard Huntington and Peter Cote from professional fiduciary services. I fall at the same thing. This people, Richard Huntington, as a trustee, he's just, just take our money against us. Even we voted, we removed him, we submitted it. He just keeps dragging the case and using our money against us. The trust money that it's my inheritance that I have to take it. And after four years, still he's just holding it. And what it is, we taught these attorneys, these fiduciaries, these conservative ship, these unjustices that whatever they're doing in South Orange County, which I'm sure it's all over California, they are powerless. These attorneys, they come, they take, they charge us through our trust money, our parents' money, our inheritance money and fight against us. And then take the case for years. And by the time that, you know, it finishes, we want to take this money back. It's going to be another year. And then we have no money to fight with them. So many people we know, we listed it. We submitted their names that after years with this company, they gave up because they ran out of money. Right now, I ran out of money spending, you know, hundreds and thousands of dollars, hundreds. And then we are fighting pro pair and they are using our money. We taught their attorneys, which the same person who, Mr. Jody Sussman said, Richard Huntington for the conservative ship. And then their attorneys, Eric Becker, he has another attorney, Steve Joe Michaels Law, and then they are using our money to fight against us. As a matter of fact, in November 30th, we have a hearing for the removal. They just keep dragging it for years, charging our trust money, not distributing anything. And what happened to Ms. Jody, it's horrible what they have done it. And I can see for another five years, 10 years, I'm going to go with the same thing. We taught these attorneys, these corrupt fiduciaries are powerless. And these attorneys, they should face not just a slap on the hand or, you know, because we've been filing complaints. We have been filing complaints with the fiduciary bureau. They have a company that they join as a real estate company and then they undersell our, you know, the trust, the trust asset, the trust property under valued. They just want to sell it. It's a group. So it's, it's a huge group that they got together. And somebody needs to hold these people accountable, get their names. We have documents. We have list of people, over 20, 25 people that they've been victimized by them. If something had done with these people years ago, which all, with all these complaints came through the board, you know, ABA board or whatever, I would not be in this situation. I fell in this situation since May 8th. And then I made it up this year. And it just like, it's horrible, horrible. And my aim is just prevent the new victim to fall for these people. Make these attorneys accountable. So it's going to be jail. It's going to be something that it's going to be so drastically, they wouldn't dare, you know, aiding and abetting these trustees or these fiduciaries, these propped at one. So the new victims is not going to be, it's going to be years for me from now to just go to it. I'm not going to get my inheritance, which I already spent, I put my house for sale just, just to pay the attorney fees. This is not fair. We need justice. We need somebody to watch for us. It seems like, you know, nobody does anything. Everybody says, oh, we are going to look into it. It's going to take years of investigation. How many years it's going to take to put, just we have documents to show. Even we proved it to the fiduciary bureau that these people, they've been removed. They've been resigned due to the complaint that brought by the, you know, people, the beneficiaries, that they were supposed to protect them. And they didn't even reported their removals, the resignations, everything else. We brought them to their attention. Somebody needs to help these people account them.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rahimi. I'm sorry, we need to go on to the next speaker. And again, sorry to hear about the issues you're going through.
If I could just ask a question, Brandon, I'm wondering if the court-appointed lawyers or how these lawyers are being, you know, were sort of hired in the first instance?
Do we still have Ms. Rahimi on the, on the line?
Yes, we do.
Yes. These, I mean, what happens once the conservative ship or trustees appointed by the court, they have to introduce their attorneys. So these people can't be, you know, just they can't be their own set of attorneys. And then these attorneys are specialized. They know what to do. They use the trust money. They do everything legally, unethically and illegally. I don't know what else to say.
Okay.
All right. Any other follow-up questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rahimi, for your, for taking time out of your day to address this, this body. All right. Yes, Mr. Tony.
Thank you. I, I want to thank the last two speakers for using this time to bring up what sound like serious concerns. I would just like to remind them and everybody else that the pathway to having concerns addressed is through filing a complaint with the state bar. And in the absence of a complaint that's filed, it's hard for us to react. So I just want to encourage that you and anybody else that has any, you know, it's a key function of the state bar to protect the public. And we're only able to do so when members of the public who are not satisfied with the representation file a complaint. So that's all I'd like to point out. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Tony, for that reminder. Absolutely. All right, Louisa, can we go on to, is it Rita King?
Yes, next we have Rita King. However, I do not see Rita King online.
Going back, do we have Michael Sternberg?
We do not. We do have one member of the public who has their hand raised, did not sign up in advance, Benjamin Cone.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Cone.
Good morning. Thank you. I wanted to principally speak on the admissions function, but because there's been some amount of comment about lax discipline and the absence of complaints when there's a problem, I did want to briefly share an anecdote that came up in one of the bar associations to which I'm a member and the Disability Rights Bar Association. And there I was disturbed to see that your reputation with respect to disability rights is actually prejudicing your ability to do the attorney discipline function as well. I, one of my colleagues shared that she had requested disability accommodations for court proceedings and opposing counsel had apparently made some uncivil bullying comments about her disability. And the, she had sought relief from the judge and the judge said he didn't know what ableist comments were. There was some suggestion from out-of-state attorneys on there that this person report that attorney for that kind of conduct to the state bar. But she did not do so because noting the reputation of the state bar, she said, the state bar is even, for those of you who are not aware, the California bar is even more ableist than this judge. So yes, you're not getting reports of that because of some of the decisions and arguments that you've been making. Moving to my primary points of comment back on the attorney admissions side, I wanted to address the upcoming January decision you have about the forced-in-person policy, whether to bring it back in some form or not. And there was a very productive forum on, I think, November 3, where the public comment was taken on that by the staff. I wanted to praise and hope that you keep using the new format where instead of just hearing public comment as sort of a monologue, the staff were choosing to address where they might have concerns about the particular suggestions that were raised with the commenters, ask follow-up questions, sort of give an opportunity to really have an interactive process about resolving where those concerns were or where the perceived flaws in the suggestions were so that they could be further developed. And I hope that at future forums, it goes more along that line than maybe some of the other forums where there was a statement that it was just for public comment that they are not going to express their views at, at that. I hope that regardless, this forum doesn't go like the rules revision where the proposal doesn't match at all what was suggested at the forums. And instead, the proposal does match it. I think there seems to be more openness on this particular kind of policy than was there with the procedures. So I am sort of holding my breath, but I do hope that is reflected in January and that you make a bright line rule that the standard condition is offered to all people with testing accommodations, even when it causes more inconvenience. Since you did insist on bifurcating the rules revision on the procedures for testing accommodations and not doing the most important five reforms in what you have voted to move, I hope you start the very long process on the timelines especially right away instead of waiting two exam cycles. Thank you.
Right. Well received. Thank you, Mr. Cone. Louisa, any other members?
Michael Sternberg has joined. If you'd still like to get public comment.
Yes, please.
Hey, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Louisa, thanks for inviting me today. I'm not really sure what the point would be other than racking up views on YouTube. I'm not sure if the board has taken a look at my YouTube channel recently. But the last public comment I gave you has gotten thousands of views. We've gotten thousands of subscribers over the last week or two. So progressing on exposing the California bar and the corrupt California judiciary or making progress on YouTube. But in terms of the bar itself, you know, what are we doing? I'm not sure of the purpose of the meeting today. I looked on the agenda. I didn't see anything other than public comment for three minutes and closed session, although I do see the timer was set for more than three minutes. So had I known ahead of time, I might have prepared something better. We have big picture, big picture issues and you guys are going to, if you are serious about accountability, which I don't think you are, you're going to have to invite me to come and testify and allow me to discuss what is going on in a non-confidential setting. All this confidentiality that's going on, that of course does not apply to me and only applies to the bar, is not helping the situation. So I recently got a closeout letter, actually a couple of days ago, about my complaint against Christina Adams. She's married to the kidnapper Tristan Naishman, who supposedly there's still ongoing investigation with him. But the closeout letter basically says, you know, we, based on your allegations and based on the court file, there's not really any evidence. Well, if you don't do an investigation, if you don't interview people, if you don't ask them to confirm what it is that you're assuming, then you're just making stuff up. And that's what the bar is constantly doing is just making stuff up and then passing it on to the CRU and then passing it on to the Supreme Court. And of course, you know, I'm documenting all that for YouTube. So that letter, I'll, I'll type up a response. I'll send it to Louisa and I'll send it to the CRU and to the executive director and hopefully the board will look at it, you know. But again, this is all going on behind the scenes. So other than me making videos on YouTube, I don't see how any of this benefits the public. The last thing I will say is, in all of this experience, whether it's at the office of the chief trial counsel level or the CRU level or the special deputy trial counsel level, there's constantly a never-ending speculation about facts that are not true and about law that is not true. And I've noticed some big picture patterns. So for example, bar personnel love to say that the bar is not a trier fact. Well, it's clearly not an investigative body either. So it's not a trier fact, yet in these same emails and same letters where it says that, it then goes on to say, we've determined as a matter of fact, that lawyer and so-and-so never did anything or never did this or never did that. But of course, they don't investigate. So they just make it up. Same thing about false conclusions of laws. So a lot of my issues, as you know, pertain to family court. And all of these bar lawyers at the offices of the chief trial counsel, the special deputy trial counsel, and so on and so forth, they come up with all these hypotheticals about what could be possible. So, oh, I can envision a scenario where ex parte communications would be okay between an opposing counsel and a judge. But that has nothing to do with my case or what I complained about. And it's actually against the law. If you read the California Rules of Court as it pertains to family court or the California Rules of Civil Procedure. So they just keep putting this nonsense. So they just keep putting this nonsense into writing into confidential letters. And the only way that you guys are going to get a handle on this is by having public hearings and allowing victims like me to put these letters up for the world to see. So I'm glad I got a little bit more than three minutes, but this is still not enough. So I'll just reiterate one more time, we need public hearings where I can put these letters up for the public to see what's going on with the office of the chief trial counsel, with the special deputy trial counsel, and with the state bar court. So I'll leave with this, we need cameras in all courtrooms now, and that includes the state bar court. A state bar judge should not have discretion as to whether to allow cameras in the courtroom. Thank you very much for hearing me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sternberg. And, you know, just in listening to your comments, you mentioned the complaint review unit, and I think that highlights um, one of the ways that, you know, we at the bar try, try to strive for organizational excellence and um, have something in place to be able to review, um, you know, review a case when it's closed out to see if there's anything else that can be done. So um, would, it just in the same veins as trustee Tony's comments. Um, definitely invite any individual who believes that um, there's some sort of issue going on that should be looked at to file a complaint with the state bar. And then if we that there's additional uh, facts or things that um, should be looked at. Um, avail yourselves of the various things in place to ensure that, you know, we, we get these uh, these decisions right. All right, Luisa, any other individuals?
Um, I think Rita King has joined. There is a, yes, okay.
Right, Rita King, can you hear us?
Yes, good morning. Uh, my name is Rita King. And um, thank you for the invite. I'm here with my elder father, just stepped out of a doctor's appointment. So I just have a abbreviated moment to speak. We had a, an urgent matter that's being handled. Uh, my father is ninety-one. He and I both reside in Orange County, California. He's trapped in a temporary conservatorship that's been going on for almost five years. Uh, there has been losses of maybe three, four million dollars, breaches of fiduciary duty. Fraud, fraud upon the court, malfeasance. Um, self-dealing, I've reported to the bureaus. Uh, I've reported to the judge. I've reported and provided all the evidence to the court. And as of four and a half years in, nobody seems to care. What I've understood now is there's such a rampant um, this is occurring not just in my dad's case, but I've found many families this is occurring in. And it appears to me that no matter what the families show. These attorneys and fiduciaries are not being held accountable, are not being even questioned. And I, it's mind-boggling, but that's what I'm seeing. Um, and I'm sorry, I, I was caught off guard because I wasn't prepared at this moment. I didn't even think I would get in here to speak. But uh, the families um, have no protection. We, we're doing, we're trying to do the right thing. We're, we're trying to take care of our elders. And when wrong is being done to them, we are trying to protect the elder. In my dad's case, APS was called and they took a report and they even referred it to the police. Uh, financial crimes against elders who took a report. Um, and yet nothing is being done. These attorneys are still on the case. Um, the fiduciaries are still on the case. And the damage is still being done. I'm working hard to get my dad out of this system. But um, apparently this has been going on for years before my dad. And uh, I fear more families are going to be facing what I've faced and many others. So something needs to be done. Uh, these lawyers and fiduciaries think they're above the law. Some judges seem to agree. Uh, but it's not right. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. King. I'm sorry to hear about the uh, the struggles. All right, any other members of the public?
We have uh, Jody Sussman, um, who has raised their hand again.
All right, Ms. Sussman, I think we've given you a chance to address the um, the board. Was there anything briefly that you needed to follow up with us on?
Yes, sir. Um, I just wanted to answer Ms. Wilson's um, question. Yes, many times these corrupt attorneys are appointed by the courts. Um, my mom's guardian, Matt Lydham David Shaver, was appointed. Um, and he colluded with the law office of Eric Becker. He didn't even meet my mother for six months after he was appointed. And said he didn't really need to meet her. He was just going along with what was in her best interest. It was not in her best interest to destroy her life for their, for their self-enrichment. And yes, I sent an email to you um, that outlines the attorneys involved, the fiduciaries involved. And I have filed a very extensive bar complaint that's uh, working its way up, I guess. Um, it's, there, there's, I mean, people are frustrated. All the victims that I've spoke to have said that they have filed bar complaints that have been sent like form letters. Well, we talked to the attorneys, we found nothing. It's over. You know, we're, we're frustrated. Um, and we're just begging for help. And I, I do pray that with my case, this might start a precedence that these attorneys are held accountable for lying in court. For committing perjury, for horrible malthesis. And I, I do really appreciate your time.
All right, thank you for making time and thank you for the additional information.
Uh, Chair Stallings Farnouse has also raised their hand again.
Okay, and just again briefly, if you have anything to add?
Yes, sir. Uh, just to respond to Mr. Tony, me as well, I filed a complaint. The, all of us have filed a complaint to the bar association, to the fiduciary bureau, to the real estate department, to the court. Nobody listens to us. Maybe we need a new movement, like a Me Too or something. Somebody needs to listen to us. That's all I was gonna say. We all have filed, either we receive the generic um, a letter that, oh, we are going to look into it or something. I even receive a letter that we are looking into it. We, it's assigned to investigator. It's going for years, nothing is happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rahimi.
And um, we have Mr. Sternberg who has also raised their hand again.
Yes, Mr. Sternberg, just briefly, please.
Very briefly, just you made some follow-up comments on my comments, encouraging people to work their way through the system. And I want to make this clear, you guys, meaning the bar, have a pattern and practice of deliberately closing out complaints, refusing to investigate and forcing the complainant into an appeal. It is extremely time-consuming. It is very difficult. The CRU does not respond. They've only responded when I started coming to these board meetings. And then again, they make up fake facts and fake law and never actually investigate anything. And then you gotta go on to the Supreme Court. So these systems are totally broken. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mr. Sternberg.
Do not have any additional members of the public who wish to address the board.
All right, uh, without opening it up for another round of public comment, I do want to turn to any of the staff members or uh, members of the board of trustees, uh, to make any comments or uh, closing uh, statements. Yes, trustee Tony.
Thank you, Chair Stallings. Um, it is noteworthy that half of the people that testified today were testifying on the same topic. Um, regarding um, the uh, concerns about attorneys involved in the conserva- conservatorship. Um, you know, financial management, particularly of elderly. Um, elderly people. Um, who, from all descriptions, appeared to be vulnerable. And I just would encourage the staff to look into it and um, help educate us as trustees about the system. Because I, I know very little about conservatorship, okay? I don't know how it works. But it would, I would stand to benefit um, from learning a little bit more about the system. And how it works in its best, in its best form. Because there must be a reason for its existence. And it must provide, most of the times, a uh, a, a service that is of value to society. Um, and then learning a little bit more about some of the uh, complaints as to what can go wrong. Just so that we are, are aware of it, um, and educate ourselves. So thank you. That was my only request.
And I, I think because that particular issue is not agendized for today, perhaps if I could have uh, George Cardona or one of his staff reach, reach out to you offline and give you a little bit more information about that, if that's something that we need to bring back before the board of trustees. Uh, that we can, you know, certainly talk about that. Um, if that, does that work for you, trustee Tony? All right, seeing thumbs up. Right, any other trustees wish to make any comments or statements? Anything for staff?
Um, no, I just, I think we were noticing the same thing as trustee Tony. And in addition to learning more about what we can do and, and our role or um, being able to articulate that perhaps more clearly. I do think the judicial council also has a role here and I was looking up, they have a probate and conservatorship working group. Um, and I think some issues um, may be appropriate to send over their way as well. So that I think will be another angle or avenue for staff to explore.
All right, thank you to staff for being responsive to that. Um, this concludes our first uh, discipline uh, hearing. And definitely appreciate every member of the public who weighed in today with your, um, each individual case. And uh, by hearing your stories, uh, hopefully we can continue as an organization to uh, be the best licensing agency that we can be. And so thank you for your input. And um, we will see you all in the near future. This adjourn, I will adjourn the uh, uh, meeting today.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.